Welcome to the hot seat.
That's right.
Welcome to the hot seat.
He's used to it. How many years you been on it? Quite, quite awhile.
Yeah. Sometimes I think too many, but.
No?
But it really helps to have somebody who's been on it.
You have a time?
Six thirty-nine.
Six thirty-nine. This meeting for the January twentieth, two thousand twenty-two planning board meeting will be convened at six thirty-nine. Take attendance.
Marla Herrick.
Adam Mark.
Susan Youngs.
Okay, acting chairman for tonight until Craig shows up. I don't have an agenda, so we'll have to look in there.
You want me to?
The first real thing is driveway regulation discussion.
Designation of.
Cause we've done opening, recording.
Do anything with, so. Okay, the driveway regulations, Craig, I mean, Russell's going on.
Well, I think a member wanted to discuss things about the driveway regulations. I think Marla wanted to speak to this one.
I, I think, just so that, you know, moving forward, um, we are all on the same page, so, you know, you don't get upset and people don't get upset and we don't hold landowners up. I, I still, I still feel.
Right.
Right, but you, you see what I'm saying? So I, I guess I just want to make sure that we understand, um, you know, with, with reading through it, it's, it's, you know, if, if it's, if it's just you and Emmett that are, are wants to finally bring it to us and say, everything looks good. And I think that's what I wanted to know and where did we stand with that, so that.
Basically, uh, the board should never have any access to knowledge of what's going on unless, unless they inquire. Uh, unless I have a problem, then I'll bring it to the board. If the landowner can't agree with Emmett and I, he can bring it to the board.
Okay, cause that's not, that's not, when I read through it, I thought how I understood it.
Very rarely.
Yeah, well, cause I understood that it's the planning board with your guys' recommendations, not, not that we weren't, didn't have a say on the situation, so.
So I went and did some research in that. So Paul was made the designee for the planning board to make decisions on behalf of the planning board on March sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, when Jerry Buckley retired from the board. And so the way that works is the board gave Paul the authority to grant driveway permits on the board's behalf without having the person have to come into a full board meeting.
Okay, so more or less he could go out and say, that you put an application in, he, then they, then he goes, him and Emmett, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Yeah, go out and they say, okay.
Right.
Okay. Okay, I just, I just, I like to like make sure I'm following along, so I do it right.
Paul or Emmett have a concern and they think they want to bring it to the whole planning board, they can bring it to the planning board for a decision. Or if the landowner has a problem, the landowner can bring it to the board for a full decision.
Okay.
But the reason they have a designee is because it expedites the process, because either that or a person would be waiting for a whole month before they can get their driveway permit.
Okay.
And ideally, if it's a really simple, easy situation, Paul and Emmett can go out, give their recommendations and sign off on it, which makes the process a lot quicker.
Good, yeah.
And the only problem where it gets dicey is where things are a little off, or something's not going right, or there's something that, you know, they have a concern.
Yeah.
Did I explain that pretty well?
The plus, that's probably what, the part, why he was here from Hillsbury Lake, that guy, is cause you guys, you, did you and Emmett?
I never looked at the lot.
Never looked at, okay.
I never looked at the lot.
Okay.
Emmett did and he called me and told me his concerns and I never went.
Okay, so we didn't really know that.
You had concerns.
But I didn't know in advance as wetlands on that property.
Right, see, we didn't, I didn't, I didn't go down and look at it at firsthand, but once he, the more the guy talked, the worse it sounded, so that's why I guess I brought it up, that he probably needs to get a permit for a culvert or what, what, that, what was happening, but did not realize that we couldn't take and give him the.
But I'm still not feeling that we didn't.
As a complete board, it cannot be done.
What's that?
As a complete board, voting here and, and voting here right now, you guys, this board cannot say to the landowner, yes, you can do it. You cannot have his driveway permit approved here.
Yeah.
You have to physically go out and look. Now, if you look in your driveway regulations, there are certain rules that you have to have, like line of sight.
Yeah.
Right.
So many state from the boundary line, just to name a couple.
I guess I was under the assumption that you guys had looked at it and that, that's what I guess I was going by, is that.
Emmett did.
Yeah, I thought you did too.
I talked to Therese about this.
What's that?
I talked to Therese about this, formerly news coordinator, and her understanding of the process is, like Paul says, they go out and verify things and they make sure it's correct before the board, so the board doesn't have to be bogged down by constant driveway permits.
Yeah, that's cool.
However, the board also, the authority is vested in the board, so the board can grant driveway permits. It's just that, and Paul is correct in this, is the board should have went out and at least made sure the driveway was following the regulations before they granted that approval. Does that make sense, Paul?
It makes sense. Uh, I'm going to add to that, the board, if the board goes out as a board, it has to be a meeting.
Correct.
It has to be posted, so many days in advance.
Three of the board, which constitutes a quorum.
Yeah.
Then I get to tag along and take notes, or somebody else has to take notes.
See, I went down, looked at it the next day and saw what, well, I saw how wet it was down there after the fact, and it's like, well, what the guy, and I think the guy in, in my mind, he's probably, and I shouldn't say it, but he snowballed us basically, is what I think he did. I, in a, in a roundabout way, how, what he told us and what will happen, I think you're going to see two different things.
Are you referring to what, that he just wanted, he doesn't just want a driveway permit to park his stuff?
Right.
That's what you mean by snowball?
Right, right.
Cause I don't, I don't feel like we got snowballed by him. I feel like that, that we have certain rules that.
I don't think his intention is to build a driveway anymore.
No.
Yeah, right, but, and that's what he means by, by.
I have had conversations.
Taking us to the next level.
He doesn't, I don't think he's going to build a driveway anymore. I think he's just going to build small access into the lot, which is said stairs, and he's going to park outside the lot.
Oh.
And then use the lot that way. And there's no regulations for stairs and there's only ordinance, I looked, and it doesn't count as a structure, but if he needs a stair to get down that steep incline, then he can do that. It's not connected to the road, and he can put his stuff on it there and store his stuff.
So probably the hawk sitting up in the tree watching him didn't help him any.
Well, no, of course, we're getting a little off the line.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
But.
I have a question. He's supposed to come to the board with a site plan review.
For what?
For what he was going to do on that piece of property.
He doesn't plan to do any building or construction on that property.
Well, he's doing something on that property, maybe not now, but he was when he came in.
Well, his plan was a driveway. Now he says he's not going to build the driveway, and also he wants to level out a section of it, but we don't have a permit for leveling, leveling the grading or lot. There's no permit for that. As long as he doesn't put a structure up or put a driveway in.
Because I mean.
Or build a house or anything like that.
So he basically, I'm not far off from what, the way I'm thinking here.
And as long as he doesn't impact the wetland.
Right.
Yep.
DES won't say anything either.
I just.
But along with that, along with that, in, in the regulations, it says that, you know, the least, you know, part of when we were deciding this, that he took the least path of resistance, you know, he followed along with everything else in there. I think where we missed it, and, and, you know, we're all kind of a little new at this, you know, Paul wasn't here, was that we should have had the blessing, but it doesn't mean that we didn't have the right to, to approve it at that time.
Except if we have all, if the board has granted that authority to Emmett and Paul, then we don't, can't make the decision without their input.
The board doesn't.
We should have their input, but you still have the authority vested in the board. For example, the select board designates the building instructor, but the power is still vested in the select board. They just grant the authority to the building inspector, which is what the board did for Paul.
Paul.
Paul granted, board granted Paul the authority to pass things on their behalf.
So more or less you could do it earlier than wait to even come in front of us, but still, what had happened the night when you weren't here, which is fine, I mean, that happens, all of us will, are going to miss meetings and stuff, so don't take that wrong, is that it wasn't like we didn't have the authority to be able to approve it. It's that, it's that we should have had, you know, we should have just probably said, sorry, we have a board member that's not here tonight that is.
Experts.
Right.
Experts, well, yeah, right.
Should have been tabled.
Yeah, and, and when we made the initial decision, most of us hadn't been there yet to look at it.
True.
That was not.
True, but still, in our regulations, it doesn't, it, there's not, it's not. We made it on the behalf of the fact that as long as he followed the rules and the regulations, that he could go ahead. So it wasn't like we said, oh, don't worry about wetlands or don't worry about DES.
No, he, or he knew all about that.
You have to, you have to follow the rules and, and the town, even right in the minutes, it says the town is not liable if, if you get in trouble with DES and that you need to know the rules and the regulations, you need to follow them properly. So I just, we don't need to kill it, and, and I could, I just want to make sure that I'm fully understanding, God forbid you're not here next meeting and something didn't happen, that, that we're all on the same page, because I still don't see that we did anything wrong by not tabling it. Maybe it wasn't the right decision, but we had the authority to be able to move along from it.
Which is why the motion was reconsidered, because concerns were brought up and it goes back to the whole board deciding. Which is what ended up happening.
Right. Perfect?
Yeah.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anything else we want to do with?
Not at this point. I mean, I still, I have a few concerns, but that's a later date for me to do more research, so that I, I make sure.
Board itself does not appoint Emmett.
No, Emmett's.
Emmett.
Fire chief.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and I know you said that you feel like the road agent should also be in there for our regulations.
Yeah.
So that's something the board can consider in the future. It's just convenient right now that the road agent and the fire chief are the same person.
Yeah.
But that might not always be the case.
That's right, and that's, that's a very good point, Paul, very good.
That, when I was a road agent, I was the one that wrote the driveway permits out, and the planning board had zero to do with it.
Yeah.
Nothing. I used to go check it all out. If it was all good, need a culvert, slope it back from the road, sign off, and away you go.
I don't know why they changed that.
I, I think it probably, I mean, why we should have to go through it when, you know, like when you go to another town and go like, and do a, a login job, okay? You've got to get a driveway permit, you go to the road agent over there, you, you give him the twenty-five bucks, uh, give it to the town, but, but he's the one that, he's, he's the guy.
Well, he's trying to watch out for the roads. I, I think the big thing is in some of our driveway regulations, I've been doing a little comparison to other towns around. We're, we're pretty, we're pretty fit, we're pretty, yeah, and, and I have, the biggest problem I have is the, is the, is the five percent grade, because where can you live in New Hampshire where you don't?
Can't.
Can't, you know, so I, but that, that can be for me to bring up maybe later discussion on, I've been doing a little research on other towns and how they do things, you know, like Warner and, and, and Hockington, which is ten percent, you know, which ten percent's a, you know, a lot more. I mean, I always think about coming off Pearson Hill, you know what I mean? That's, that's at least ten percent.
Oh, that's all.
It might be a little bit more than that, but that's what I, I kind of, in my brain can say, well, that's ten percent, but five percent's not very much, and I guess I, where I'm going to try to do a little bit more research and look into, and there again, then you have to bring it from the town and everything, is there may have been a reason behind it, and I, that's what I would like to look more into.
Well, like I told you in the email, the benefit with the driver regulations, that doesn't have to go to the town vote. So that can be.
Oh, okay, so I'm wrong then?
Public hearing.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to let you know. So if you do have these concerns, and the board agrees with those concerns,
Okay.
it's definitely easier than it is to change the zone.
Gotcha, okay, good, good. Well, so that can, we don't, we don't have to be on that tonight. I just, it just, by dealing with what we just went through with things and, and some of the other issues I've seen with driveway permits in this town, I just, I just would like to make it that, listen, we don't want people coming in and ruining our roads, right?
No.
Right? I get that, you know, you want to have the proper culverts, the water, we don't want things washed now, and if you read the other towns around here, it's all stated, we actually say a lot of the same stuff with the, with the culvert and the wa, you know, the water draining correctly. You know, you know, the sixty-degree grade, you know, so, but with the, but the five percent, that's to me, that's tough, that's tough to do. Especially in New Hampshire, I mean, we don't, if you lived where it was flat, that would be no problem.
Right.
But, but it makes a lot of property, and, and when you say a licensed engineer, we all know they're expensive, they're hard to get, they're, you know, so if you already have a road agent, who, which, which trust, and Paul's got knowledge in it, to say, hey, you know, if it's a little bit more than five percent, you know, cap at ten, you know, you know, where if you got to go over ten, then get us, then, then you go in front. That's, that's where I go with that.
That's what we did with the last driveway.
Right, skews down there.
The seals, it's like, yeah, there's a difference between steepness going around a curve and a steepness going straight right.
That's right.
Well, that was just a dumb right.
Well, and it, and it says.
This gentleman's case, he was coming up out of his driveway, out onto a road, which I, I agree that the speed limit on that road is twenty-five and it should be very little traffic, but he's still going to come out. If he had to stop, pulling a trail out of there, it's going to be tough.
Well, there's a lot of town roads like that too, Paul, where you come out and you're kind of like, you know.
Yeah, well, that's, that's stuff you can work out with the owner of the driveway.
Yeah.
It's been interesting, since we did this, and I drove up to visit my daughter in Maine, and I'm driving, and I'm, I'm looking at some of these driveways, and I'm thinking, wow, that would never pass approval.
Why? But see, but see, we, we shouldn't be thinking that way, because that's not really right either.
Yeah, look at a lot of these driveways in town, they're grandfathered, and there's nothing we can do about it.
Yeah.
Unless they decide to modify them, then they have to bring up the code and what it is today.
Yeah, but then that makes, listen, part, isn't part of our reason for making sure we have regulations is to protect and try to, and help people out and do the right thing for the town, but you don't want to make it unaffordable to live here either. And, and you start putting engineers in and you start taking Phil and, and taking, you know, something that's this and making it this, that's a lot of money. Material is not cheap, equipment time and, and all that, so that's, that's all, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Like that driveway down there, if they would have done something different with the corners, that was, that was a perfect, I mean, they did an awesome job on that driveway.
The driveway's beautiful, but, you know, even like in our, and I think I saw guardrails, I'm like, oh, God, guardrails are not cheap, but even rocks or something. Cause I get it, nobody wants to be coming down it if you're, if you're an emergency vehicle and, you know, flying off the side of the road, so.
Well, the corners, it, with a fire truck on ground like we got wouldn't work.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I, I definitely don't dig that, but a, a straight stretch with some turnoffs and it, it would be okay. Be better than what they got, but it's too bad they wouldn't have done that to start with, and it would have saved them a lot of.
Right, a lot of, a lot of money.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
But whatever.
All right, well, thank you, and, and we'll, and we may, we may, I, I did want to do a little more research so that I can talk as knowledgeable as possible.
Yep.
How's that? Don't tell anybody, no. That I talk knowledgeable.
All right, and the next one is the CIP.
We have, um, we do have three driveways in town that have not been finished yet, well, actually two that haven't been finished yet, haven't been approved, final for various, for various reasons. Supposedly the select board is taking care of both of them, but I don't know if anything has been done with either one of them.
I'm not sure.
No, I don't, I haven't heard anything.
Went on Conker Drive. He's, uh, encrinsed onto his neighbor's property, uh, with less than that ten-foot buffer.
First I've heard of it. I've been at every meeting.
And there's another one out on, not Centennial, but way out on the Hampshire Drive. That's been, that's a hole, that's, that'll never get done.
What are these people that just have started driveways and this has?
So basically they got a permit.
Yeah.
And they never went back for final approval. Is that what I'm thinking?
They have, they have not got their final approval, neither one of them.
And from what Paul was saying, they likely will not get their final approval unless changes are made.
Yeah.
And what, now what made you think it came in front of us? This, well, I say us on the only place.
You're the code enforcement body.
Oh.
That's an example where it could not be resolved between Emmett, myself, and the landowner.
Okay.
So it comes in front of the board.
Oh, yeah.
Have they requested a final inspection?
I don't know if they have.
Maybe that's why we haven't seen it yet, then.
But then again, sometimes they never request a final inspection.
They probably never will.
That's, that's the other problem. That's, that's an ongoing thing.
We also have another one up on one twenty-seven, Bubby Drowns.
Yeah.
His driveway is done, but it's not done. He does not have the asphalt from the road here.
So one of the things I haven't been looking at with Emmett is there are state laws that say, you know, if your drainage isn't right in your driveway, or you didn't do that, the, the road agent can send you a letter, say, you need to fix this, and if you don't fix it by X date, I'm going to fix it, and we're going to send you the bill. And with that one, that would be the easiest solution.
Uh, for the one.
Cause that means it's going to get done.
For the one on Conker Drive, that would be an easy, wouldn't, wouldn't have been easy on, on either one.
Is that the one we talked about in the past where Emmett said he would go out and move it? I know we had one like that before, and it wasn't an angry, he'd help them, but.
Don't know if it was.
I'm trying to remember, because I think that happened in the past too.
Yeah.
Where Emmett said he would go in and fix it real quick, and then he did.
He could have, a long time ago, fixed it real quick, but the guy didn't want to do it.
Cause he was there with his equipment anyway.
And the, the builder that built the house originally did it the right way, and he was going to go in and redo the driveway for the landowner, but they didn't want to do it.
And I think Emmett's brought up another concern one today on New Hampshire Drive that we're going to look into too. But if you want to get me a list, or we can have you come into a select board meeting, and you can talk to the select board about it, because you know more about it than I do.
Well, I know there's, there's those two in a way. There's another one down on.
And then we'll pull the permits and put those in too.
One, one down on Pleasant Street where they were supposed to block off, put a permanent blockage. All they did was drag a tree across that, it, it's working, so.
Well.
They're not using it.
That's the important part, but.
Yep.
Right, or what is, what is considered, you know, blockage, you know, do we have a list of what is okay to use a tree, rocks?
Probably not. I think that would be a condition you would put on it when you told them.
Junk cars.
Junk cars.
Right?
I'm sure that's happened in a couple places.
No, I mean, there are a few problems in town, but there's, basically there's not many, so.
Right.
There's only been the three instances that I know of that we have come in front of the board because we couldn't resolve the problem, so.
Well, that's that one. Do we have any else on the subject?
One.
Not that I'm being pushy.
Ready to move to the next thing.
That's right.
Let's see, Ford Drive.
Twenty-two, twenty-seven CIP plan approval, what is that one all about?
Well, I brought it in because usually the planning board's supposed to sign off on it. Now, Dana gave me the, cause I missed the last meeting, so I don't know what happened, because I had COVID. But Dana gave me the updated numbers, and he said, once we update the charts, it's ready to be approved.
Okay, yeah.
So I've updated all the charts, so everything is what it is currently, and now it just needs the board to sign off on it.
So then I need to go with, then it's go to the select board for that.
Well, the select board's already looked at it. You, you've already got your copy and used it on the new budget. Well, that's one of the things I wanted to discuss too, because I think we need to start this a little earlier, so it's ready and signed off on
Okay.
before the select board uses it for the budget. I think that's ideally how we should do it, but I don't know how the planning board feels, or if that's the way it's been in the past, or.
It works for me.
It works for you.
I don't see why, there's any reason for us not to have things ready, I mean, right, like, unless I'm missing something.
I just think the select board, you, we usually start the budget, I think, at the end of October, early November.
Yeah.
So if we had the CIP plan updated by the beginning of October, it should be all set to go.
This, this process now is minimal.
Right.
Compared to what it was when we did it the first time. It took us the whole summer to do it the first time.
Yeah.
Cause now it's just updating, right? Cause each year, cause it's, it's five years, that, that somewhat sense.
It wasn't too bad. I went there, this is my first year doing it, because I, I wanted to learn some of it.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a hard process. We just sit down, the department head sends all their requests in, and we sit down and talk about it. But I don't know if we want to sign off on this tonight, but that's just a simple sign off. And I wanted to put it there so we can get it to the town clerk, so we can go on the permanent file.
Uh, Craig should be signing it as, as a chairman, right?
Right.
But you can come in and sign.
A spot for all of us to sign.
Has a spot for all of us to sign.
Okay. I mean, it does. If the board feels like they want to sign it, then we'll put it on it.
That's what the board, if you think it's ready, if you don't, because I know Craig sent an email out to the CIP committee.
Yeah, are you okay with signing it tonight?
Yeah, I guess it's going to happen.
I mean, I, I went through it and.
It looks high.
Well, you had some comments, so I'm going to take that into account for next year, try to delete that repetition.
Oh, that, yeah, because there was a repetitious section.
Cause that's fine, but this year's done, I'm just worrying about next year now. So I'm just passing along. But at this point, it's like the select, it's, it's for the select board, the select board already used it.
I didn't use it, Ben.
I might allow it.
All right, thank you.
A bit to sanitize it, Em.
That's all right, you want to do that too, because you've got grease all over it.
I forgot to put this on the agenda, but it's old news, old business. Remember how we were talking about the CIP? Or the, not the CIP, the master plan, the recommendations? I summed up what was the planning board's responsibilities and put them in a quick bullet list. If people want to look at it and see if we want to pursue any of these objectives that were laid out before. I didn't think we'd have to discuss it this meeting if nobody wanted to, but that's basically the sum up.
I'm already the first one I'm not into historic structures.
Thank you. I, I haven't signed it yet, I was just looking at what I was signing.
Second one either.
Here you go, Paul. Thank you.
So Kathy and Craig have the bonus.
Kathy let me know if she wasn't going to make it. I printed enough for everybody, but there are only three signatures to prove it.
So can you explain, just because I'm kind of new at this too, explain to me a little bit, we're looking at people, somebody made.
So in two thousand eighteen, the planning board, I wasn't around then, so all I'm going off of was what the master plan says in it.
Yeah.
Paul, I think you were part of that committee back then?
Yeah.
So these were things that the committee discussed and thought they should be put into the master plan as things that would be looked into in the future, whether the board would do it or not.
And do they have reasonings behind it?
They do, it's in the master plan, but this is just supposed to be a quick bullet list.
So, so we could go back and do a little research and see what, why they, why they were requesting or thinking this is necessary?
Right.
Okay.
This is just one of those, this is what was said, do we want to, you know, consider any of it? Is this stuff the board doesn't want?
I, I would want to do research on it first to see if there was a reasoning behind it.
I agree with that, that's why I thought I would bring the list up and.
I'm for less rec, you know, less.
Right, that's not, this don't work.
Less is better, but, yeah, so I, you know, granted, maybe on some, I'm, I'm, you know.
Well, some of it has loosening up, for example, considering a village district, because currently there's no commercial use allowed in town.
Right.
And that would create.
That needs to happen.
Would create a little bit of a commercial space, and there's one to develop areas where you could have smaller density lots as opposed to the five acre minimums.
That's all good.
Yeah, well, that's why.
Plus the housing's good.
Yeah, and housing, people could make it go.
So I mean, if you took somebody you wanted to have some elderly housing, that, in town would be all right, but that, that needs to happen in some, at some point, you know? For, just because there's a lot of people that are getting old and it would be.
It's not us.
Huh?
It's not us.
Oh, no, I'm thinking of myself.
No, yeah.
Right? But.
So I threw that together real quick.
As far as the historic structures and all, the zoning for that stuff is, uh, let it go at that, the twenty-five percent.
It's not clear, it's not clear what they, what that first one.
Means even.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, I'd want to know more about it before I say it isn't necessary.
For historic structures, you'd think an old house or a barn, that's what comes to mind more.
I know, but, but what are we talking about?
Yeah, what is it saying?
We don't want, we don't, yeah, it's not clear.
We don't want historical.
Yeah, exactly, it's not clear what kind of regulation they're talking about.
Right. This was just, I went through and grabbed all the bullet points right over it and just quick one sentence for it. And I know there was other things that were mentioned, such as, this is outside of it, junkyard ordinance to deal with some of the junkyards we have in town. That's been floated around a couple times, that'd be a planning board thing.
Is Camille's on, is Camille's in Webster at all?
Yes.
Am I allowed to say that aloud?
Yeah, no, you are.
The front of the property is in Warner, I think it is, and the majority of the property is in Webster.
Yeah.
Yeah, wow.
So it's a joint.
It's a two, two.
Oh, it's a two?
It's just a.
So, and it, does anybody know real quick, without taking tons of time, why, why none of the rest of us could pull that? Not that we'd want to, but the rest of us might be in jail.
Well, yeah, I think there's an entire file about. Well, yeah, I think there's an entire file about this bit.
Oh, Jesus.
The buyer cabinet filled with.
The court and everything else. It's in the court.
That I spent.
Right, oh, I did hear that, yeah.
So, well.
Is that something that can be revisited, or is it just it's done?
It needs to be revisited, cause I'm gonna tell you right now.
There's not gonna be one twenty-seven, I can't believe the state.
Me neither.
Twenty-seven is getting like this.
It's on the road, and then it's like, you know something, that judge that did what he did, needs to live right directly across the street.
I'm gonna be, like, we're getting close to reputation, so.
Okay.
I don't wanna get the board in trouble with reputation, if you wanna not bring names in and.
Oh, yeah, we didn't, I just said the judge, I don't know who it was.
Well, I might have, I might have, I might have, and I don't mean to, I just, who owned the, I just didn't know, okay.
And there is things, like the junkyard ordinance, if we had one, the junkyard would have to be licensed every year. And there are certain stipulations that were put in the, in the lawsuit. So I I have all those documents.
How about the welfare of those animals?
Has it, has, has the lawsuit been settled?
Yeah, it's done.
Oh, yeah, that was years ago.
What happened?
He won.
Yeah, well, I think it was a mixed bag.
But he's, that's like.
He gets to keep what he has, but there are conditions on that lawsuit.
Wow.
So that's just something we should probably.
Address.
Revisit.
That's why I brought up the junkyard.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, I, yeah, okay, good.
And welfare of those animals too.
Yeah.
That needs to be addressed.
And then there was the other thing I brought up previously, which is the changes to the agritourism laws. I know you're not a big fan of any regulation, but I.
There needs to be, there's a difference between farming and farming.
Correct.
Alright, there's a big difference, and when you go by there, that's not farming.
That's not farming.
That is not farming, and that's a disgrace to the farming.
And I agree, and I think that's the same thing with agritourism, there's a difference between putting a chicken coop in your backyard and then putting a bar there free free of the get-go.
Yeah.
And having a farm that you brew and make your own whiskey and then have a bar out front.
There's nothing wrong with that either.
Right. But there's, and then, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be allowed, but should that person have to, you know, if we're gonna have a bar in town, should they have to help us, you know, pay for the new police officers that are gonna be out shipped on late nights, and that would be an impact fee, because the town would be impacted by having a bar.
Well, they'd have to pay the impact fee before they started it, right?
Correct, but the way we have it currently, they could just do it.
Well, that's right, but but I mean, the agritourism.
That's why I brought that up, to say, do we wanna have that?
It it is not, what he's doing over there is just a disgraceful mess. And it's, those animals, you see them right out next to the road.
Oh, yeah, the chickens.
And 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 the sheep and all of this stuff.
And once again.
What?
We tried not to be specific to.
We're not, I didn't say who it was, I just said that the animals are right out on the pavement, and it's like, that's not farming.
Yeah.
We have fences.
Yeah.
Well, that's, so, so, okay, so expl- so we we kinda get this, we'll do our little bit of, this is due diligence, right?
Hey, maybe it's our fearless leader.
Could be.
Our fearless leader.
You guys didn't start without me?
Yeah, we did.
You're gonna be so happy.
We're almost happy, we're almost on the agenda.
Alright.
We're rocking and rolling.
I I apologize for being late.
It's alright.
Just splat your hair.
I'm gonna give you this, this is some follow-up I did.
We're basically down to number six on the agenda.
You could take over?
No.
Yeah.
No. Continue.
I knew you.
Oh, graciously agreed with the chair.
He's doing a good job.
He is doing a great job.
Yeah.
That's good.
Keep it up.
So we're on number six, right?
But but just so I know what to do, so we we do a little research on this, and then, uh, do you have, what we, we're talking about the junkyards and the?
So I can bring you, I can provide some stuff on junkyard ordinances. I have, there's a whole, I got a book from an HMA that talks about code enforcement, there's a whole section on junkyards, it's about thirty pages.
I've heard a little bit about that even from other towns.
Junkyards are a very interesting thing.
Yeah.
About welfare of the animals.
So I don't know how much we can get into welfare of the animals, I would have to do more research into that. Cause I know there are rules for, what is it, a nuisance farm, I think is what it's called in the legislature.
That would fall in that category.
Yeah.
It would.
What does that?
A nuisance farm, so say if somebody just has some real, I don't even know what a nuisance farm would look like.
Well, let let, I I would say it like some bulls and cows and just let them run free, that might be a nuisance, you know, if you get up in the morning, it's got a silent, it's coming after you, that could be a nuisance.
I grew up near a farm, I walked to the bus stop, and there was a cow right there, I was fine with it.
Yeah, no, no, I I'm not saying, I'm just thinking, you know, like he pointed out, everything's behind a fence and or or, you know, chickens are one thing, they, you know, but that's where I could see a nuisance farm being.
The sheep are, I mean, they're out in the road, it's like, and and when you look at them, I just can't imagine that this is, that's not farming.
So this is something for the future.
This is for the future.
You could have a puppy mill too.
Right, right, yeah.
Well, we have people that discuss that with me, if they can raise, you know, dogs and stuff here in town, like, yeah, it's agriculture, good.
See, I went right for the Scottish Highland or cows, they've been a nuisance before in my house, they get out, try to come in the house.
You don't need a permit in Webster for our.
Aren't there state laws that that regulate?
There are, but that's the state.
They were my flowers, no, that's a nuisance, honey, get those in.
Well.
Shall we move on?
Yes.
Alright.
So what do you want us to do, you're just gonna, we're gonna do some more research, and I just wanna be sure I don't get here.
Oh, I forgot about one thing, we have the the Warren article.
Yes, for wet, the wetlands, right?
So I didn't know if that was.
That's the next thing on here.
Yeah. So that was just, you know, proving the language that goes on the Warren article.
This is it here.
Yep, that's it.
No. Somebody, I, does somebody have an extra copy? Why did I not?
Pulled up on my computer.
I didn't, did you get that?
It's really short.
That's something that someone's gonna have to read when they don't know what they wrote.
That way.
It's just what's gonna go on the ballot. I just wanna, I'm gonna hand it to the town clerk once the board says.
Can you read it?
It's just, yeah, it's just a a recap of what the.
What we said.
What we, what the, is in the ordinance, just, you know, trying to get, you know, you can't include everything, right? So you wanna hit like the major points, is all you want.
I can read it if you want.
Sure, if you don't mind.
Are you?
And and then, and then once she reads it, then we take a vote on what, that's how we like it to be written?
I mean, I.
Probably don't have a lot of choice of how it'll get wrote, because this is what it's agreed of, right?
What we did the last meeting.
This is just a summary of the thing.
This is just a question.
Are you in favor? We're not, we're not voting in the ordinance at all.
Yeah, of the adoption of the wetlands and watershed protection ordinance and amendment to the existing zo- zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board. Okay, that's the basic question, and then it says, purpose of the ordinance is to protect clean water for current and future web- Webster residents, maintain drinking water quality, reduce stormwater and flood impacts, provide a habitat for plants and animals, and preserve the quality of life for Webster citizens. This ordinance establishes two districts with buffers for each district. The buffer is a strip of vegetative land that protects the wetlands and water bodies from destruction and pollutants by regulating the uses and activities allowed in the buffer. Districts are depicted on the map attached to the ordinance, level one district consists of the twenty-five most important wetlands, ponds, and rivers. Other wetlands and surface waters equal to or greater than two acres in size that have certain functions and vernal pools. Level one district includes a buffer of one hundred feet from the edge of the wetlands and surface waters. The level two district includes all wetlands and surface waters that are greater than a quarter acre in size and that are not included in the level one district, plus a buffer of fifty feet from the edge of the wetlands or surface waters. For existing lots, less than two acres inside the applicable buffer is fifty feet from the edge of the wetlands or surface waters. Current existing uses and activities are largely grandfathered, as are legal non-conforming uses, structures, and lots with some conditions. The ordinance is administered by the planning board and includes procedures and requirements for applications, conditional use permits, waivers, mitigation, and enforcement. The proposed ordinance supports the goals of the we- Webster Hazard Mitigation Plan and the Master Plan. That's, that's what's gonna go on the ballot.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Thank you, so it basically summarizes the whole. It's up, I mean, this is gonna be voted on before town meeting, yes? Will the whole, will there somewhere be the whole thing for, they, people can refer to if they want to?
It's gonna be on the website, it's already on the website, it's gonna be in my office, and it's gonna be in the town clerk's office.
Yeah.
I would suggest that we move the for existing lots less than two acres in size applicable up to the top, because it's got the grandfather clause in it. That's what people are gonna be looking for. Or find a way to add the grandfather to that first section of it.
Oh, yeah, cause people.
People are gonna be looking for that grandfather.
So I, yeah, though.
They'll have to read all the way down through there, get halfway in, no.
So you're saying move the sentence, currently existing uses and activities are largely grandfathered, as are non-conforming uses, structures, and lots with some conditions, move that up to the district are dependent on the map or before that even, uh.
We'll propose it to the top, or or put something in the top that's state grandfathered.
Cause we could do it after it says, this ordinance establishes two districts, for each, whatever the buffer is, a strip of vegetative protects wetlands from destruction and pollutants by regulating, or the ordinance establishes, trying to think of how I would fit it up there. Sorry.
So Paul, you're concerned because you want people to know that if they do decide to vote for this, that if they already live here, then their grandfather, it's gonna be the people coming into town.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we've had a lot of people come before our public meeting, that have less than two acres, and that's, that's a big concern, so.
Yes, yeah. And if you're gonna have any chance at all of that passing, you gotta make sure you put something that they can read early in the thing about grandfather, so they know that.
So we could put it right in.
About that, Paul.
I think we could move it up right up into the first paragraph, and just do it after it says, for, and preserve quality of life for Webster citizens.
And then put it.
And then put it right there. Current existing uses and activities are largely grandfathered, non-conforming uses and structures on, and lots with some conditions, and then go into the whole ordinance. So I think that, we could do that, that's easy.
We should. Um, you wanna make a motion, and Paul will vote on it, just make it official.
Why, because it's not, I mean, really, really, it's just cause you, you, you gotta summa- summarize it, but, I mean, that's, that's, that's a, that's a lot for somebody to, to read and think, oh, God, which way do I vote?
Yeah.
Like, but I don't know how you make it, to me, when you, when you read it, even though I understand there's certain rules and regulations that you had to follow, it sounds very, you did a great job, cause you got a lot to put on that, I mean, I get it, I get it, I, and I'm not, you hate, it's just, wow, somebody might say, oh, and not really understand what they're, I'm hoping we can get that out, that you really, you know.
Going to have probably the ordinance they're voting to, or the ordinance if somebody wants to look at it.
But you know is what I'm saying, too, you come in and vote, you're not, I mean, that, unless you really understand your property and wetlands and what you own, you might just say, oh, alright, it, cause you said it nicely, protect, protect, people are gonna say, protect, protect. But it also could take land in the future and and make it not usable, so that's, that's, but I don't know how you say that. I want them to understand both.
That's all you gotta do is put it down just like that.
Well, cause you can protect, but you can make something unusable, but that, this person's grandfathered, see what I'm saying? That's, that's the problem that I, that I, I sleep with, with these wetlands. You know, they're, cause they're above and beyond what the state has already has in place. I don't know, maybe we say that, above and beyond what is already regulated by DES? Or I don't know, I don't know, I just want people to understand that, that it's one thing to protect wildlife, and it's one thing to protect water, but, you know, there's also, there's also affordability and and property is not what it used to be. Yes, we'd want good drinking water, everybody does, but be careful, because there's the reason the DES doesn't have stronger rules, and we have stronger rules than they do. I, that's just, I don't know how you say that, though, I mean, I think what Craig wrote was awesome, but I, I mean, make, make sure people realize that protect, protect is not.
I, I think.
I'd say he could change stuff, he'd like to change stuff, but he don't have much choice.
No, I know.
As far as how it all shook out, you know what I'm saying, it's like, and I'm not.
That's what I mean.
Nothing bad, but I I get how it would all tick.
Well, you know, I'm just, I, what we're trying to do is think down the road, think ahead a little bit. And, you know, you own some property in Winnapocket.
Yeah, I do.
So what happens if somebody, you know, builds close to the water and they do something that's gonna adversely affect Winnapocket Lake? Not only lake, but they adversely affect your property.
But where do you think the DES rules don't already protect that?
Well, they don't, there, there's no buffers, I don't believe, except, except septic, you know, they, they have control over septic, but in terms of placing a house.
Except we shouldn't be arguing the merits of the plan.
No, 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 no.
Cause all we have to do now is decide what goes on the ballot.
Agreed, but be careful that you don't make people think that, oh, my God, if I don't vote for this, my water's gonna go bad.
Correct.
That, that, that's, that's what, that's, I, I know, I know, don't, don't take, I know, but, but still, there's rules in place for protecting water, that's why we have a DES, that's why, that's my, I don't know, could we, could we gentle it up a little bit in the sense of protect, protect, or I feel like that's too strong, I think that would mislead people personally.
Well, just, let me say one more thing.
You can tell me, walk outside.
And then outside, but, you know, there are a lot of towns that have these wetland ordinance, this is not.
Right.
We're not hanging out on a limb, and we've looked at other towns and what they've said, and buffers and size and all that, and what we think we've done is sort of reasonable for Webster, it's not, it's not unreasonable. That's my view, but.
Now, the question is, do we?
At the moment, all we can do is what we've got done.
Yeah.
And in front of the people, let them vote, yes or no, for passes that passes, if I don't.
Agreed, but you just don't wanna be misleading, that's all, to me.
I mean, if people, if people have questions, they, they really should read it.
Right.
And it'll be there available, but the question is, do we have to actually vote to move that a bit, I mean, you.
No, no, I think, I think with just the wordage of the, of the warrant, right?
Yeah, we could change the, as far as I'm concerned, we could change the wording of the warrant, I don't care about that, but.
I think the grandfather's thing, putting up close to the front makes great sense. It just, because it's true, if if people read it and then they say, oh, whoa, no, no, I've already, I'm already in violation, and then right. They may not even read long enough to see that actually they're grandfathered.
Right, it's been a big issue for people coming in here.
Slipper a few over a lot of land.
I just, I just think about laws that used to be in place, where I grew up in Iowa, there are sinkholes. And on the family farm, they dumped everything in the sinkhole, because that was their, that was where their sort of farm dump was, without realizing that those sinkholes led directly to the groundwater. And obviously, laws had to change, and you can't keep doing everything the way it was done fifty years ago, because we know more now than we did.
That's the reason I refer back to the DES rules in place already.
Yeah, but, um, all we have to decide now is the wording of what goes on the warrant.
That's right, and I, and all I can say, my opinion, and do what you want, and everybody does what they want, I, I think the, you know, I think there's laws in place to protect the water that we drink, it's not, I just think that's a little heavy in there, but that's me, that's all I get to say.
Oh, I mean, just to move that section up to the top, do we have to make a motion and all of that, cause it was, it was just a draft anyway.
What do you think, Chris?
Uh, I don't know, I'll be honest, I just, that's why I wanted to bring it to the board.
Alright.
But he drafted it, he had it, read it before he drafted it, so.
This is the first time it's come out in front of the board, so I don't think we need to make a motion.
So we think we should just put it on the ballot and have that moved up to the top?
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
Uh, one, one, one bit further, uh, maybe we can get a copy of that to the grapevine and we can put it out in the February.
Right, we can probably put the whole, see if we, well, I know the conservation commission is working on stuff for education in the upcoming grapevine. I think they're putting a flyer in the grapevine.
Trying to get it all to pass.
But I'm just saying, if this is in the grapevine, people will have already read it.
I mean.
Yes.
Supposedly. So when it comes to the polls, it, they know what it is.
Doesn't this draft ballot usually go on the grapevine? Does the ballot go on there?
I don't remember ever seeing it there.
I don't remember.
I'm kind of surprised it doesn't go.
But there is supposedly a, a meeting.
I'll talk to Dee about that. I have the inside information on that.
I think there's supposed to be a meeting in February for the mock.
Yeah, it's February 3rd.
February 3rd?
Yep.
Well, that's not going to give them much time to read that.
Yeah, it's the mock, mock town meeting. I don't even think the grapevine will be out by then, or maybe it will.
I don't generally get mine until the fifth or sixth of the month.
So that's that, then?
I think so.
Yep.
Uh, what's next on the agenda?
Proving of minutes.
We got proven of minutes.
All right, time for me to get in trouble.
Did he get the date right?
All looks good.
I, I always have a hard time with this part because it's like, I don't want to read through in great detail. I always just assume that you just left a good job.
I did read them both. It looked good to me. I mean, I'm not going to tell you you spelled anything wrong because that's not my forte.
But is the content, what everybody remembers happened at the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, December 2nd, 2021, a meeting. Anybody have any comments or questions or concerns?
No, I don't.
No, I don't.
Make a motion that we pass the minutes as written.
I second the motion.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Pass. That takes day one. Um, the next one, I was not here, so I can't vote.
December 16th.
December 16th?
That was the long discussion with Edison Chee.
Yep.
Is it?
Yes, that's about that's the one it was.
Not January 6th?
No, just November 16th.
That was the regular slot board meeting?
All right.
December 16th.
To be planning.
That's interesting. It says November 16th.
Sorry, I.
Hey, hey, talk something.
I hear you all the time.
I know, you are, you are too.
That's right. I abstained from this vote. I remember this now.
No, but I, I read it. It looked good to me, so I, once that is ready.
I just wanted to make sure when I did your, for the record quote, I did exactly what you wanted.
Yep, no, it's very good.
That's the one I wanted to make sure was right.
I have one more comment if I'm allowed, when we're done doing this.
Talk to the chair.
I'm, I'm just saying out loud. Yeah, what, finish what you're doing.
Okay.
Finish what you're doing. Talk to the chair.
Everybody okay to vote on the December 16th?
Yep. That was the.
We need somebody to make a motion other than Paul.
I move that we approve the minutes as submitted for December 16th.
I'll second the motion.
Aye.
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 And I abstain because I was not here. And the last one would be.
That is the 6th.
January 6th meeting?
Yep.
Edison Chee.
I didn't see any changes in there, and I need to vote.
That was a much briefer.
Right.
Well, it was a long meeting, but I, I tried to sum it up of what was the important parts.
It's all good. That one's all good.
I move that we approve the minutes from January 6th.
I'll second it.
Oh, okay.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Moving, uh, January 6th, minutes for 22 are passed.
And that's it?
That's it. Driveway regulations we've done. I don't know what this other one is.
New bit, any new business?
Okay.
The new business was.
The only new business I can say is Emmett and myself have passed the driveway application for Mr. Chee. So it's up to him to do what he wants to do. Provided he follows the rules.
Were there any conditions on the permit?
Just the COVID.
COVID and a copy of the wet, his wetland delineation attached to it, which is.
Yep.
But then he has been talking to Russ in regards to not doing anything and just putting stairs or something? Is that what you were saying?
Put stairs on it and level the area. He can level it.
So we can, what, what, wait a minute, what, what's he talking about?
Yeah, he's, he's changing the whole, the whole ballgame. So now I would very seriously consider doing something different with him if he's going to do all that.
Well, I mean, we don't have regulations when it comes to stairs.
No, no, I don't mean stairs. What's he building down there?
Not building anything as far as we know. And if he does, if he does build something, that's a totally different ballgame. Well, it's actually not a ballgame for us, unless it's a new baleen. If it's a shed or something, that's up to the builder. Because that's their rules, not our rules.
Okay.
This is the first time I've been down there.
Right.
You have something you want to?
Well, I, I, I'm just making sure I understand and, and there's no vote on it and we, I don't think we really have any say in the way that he wrote the warrant article. Is that, is that kind of correct?
I'm not sure.
Okay, is that something you can look into or does that something because, and the reason I ask only because I, I, like I said, I, I worry a little bit about, you know, like I, I could think, you know, because as of not reading it before, I think, oh, what else would I, might I say? Just so, just like when you talk to an employee, you want to make sure they know the good, the bad, and the ugly of something, correct? And when you write a warrant article, you don't want to make it just sound like, and I know you're doing it because you feel that that's what exactly is happening is that, oh, my God, if I don't vote for this, I'm not protecting my water. I, I just think those are very, it's very strong language in that.
My problem is, is the warrant has to be on ballot. We have to have that in by the first.
Of February.
Without talking about what the DES regulations are.
Well, I mean.
You can't say, it, it's really hard to talk about.
No, I think what you did, I think you were trying, I just, I guess I've, I can shut up.
Do we want to do that as a motion and just?
Do what?
Approve the language as a motion or do we just want to go forward with it? Because I need to know. That's kind of.
I, I feel more comfortable with a, a motion and a vote.
Okay.
Are we allowed to make like a suggestion to put on there or no?
Well, put it up to, I mean, make a, make a motion and then we can vote on that.
And, and I don't know why my brain's telling me this, but I want to make it clear that these, these are regulations that are above and beyond the state RSA for New Hampshire wetlands.
So we can put that in there, that, a note that says.
Do you see what I'm trying to say?
I, I get you on that one. You, you just want to add that paragraph into what?
To let people know that this is above what the state regulates.
Above and beyond, right. That's a good idea. Real good. That way people know.
Let me, let me read it. I'll try to make, see if my language makes.
Because people don't know. There's a lot of people that don't land it. Just, they don't know.
For Webster citizens, and then after that, we can add a little thing that says above what the state reg, New Hampshire DES regulates. And then we add the sentence of the grandfathering right after that. Does that make sense?
That'd be on the top.
That'd be right on the top.
Yep. That would be real good.
Is everybody okay with, do we want to make a motion for that? I can't make motions. I would, but I can't.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, whatever we approve.
The warrant.
The warrants and the warrant.
Right up.
For the wetlands and watershed ordinance.
For the wetlands and watershed ordinance.
With the following changes.
With the following changes.
And then what are the changes we're doing? So we're doing, moving, we're adding above and beyond or above. Yeah, above and beyond, above.
And beyond. I like the above.
I mean, are we going to be really specific and say, I mean, how much above and beyond is it?
Yeah, right. That, you sort of get into.
I mean, if it's an incremental thing, that, that makes a big difference.
True, true.
If it's a major change, then that, that's more serious.
And without, without, I mean, you sort of open up the bag. What is the DES regs that you're getting over the top?
Right, but along with your saying that if we don't, if, if I was to read that, if I was going to come in, I would say, oh, my God, if I don't vote for this, I'm not going to have clean water, to be honest with you. That is the way I feel when I hear it said. Now, is that the way you feel? It probably is, and I don't disrespect that. It's just, no, that's the way, that's why I want to make sure that at least there's something that is telling people that there is regulations that have been in place. We're now doing something more and beyond it.
And if you're a big landowner and you saw all this happening.
At, at least, at least they're a little bit more aware of.
That it's above and beyond what you normally would have to go through. Right. That's correct. You are correct. Even though people have dumped 50 years ago, it still isn't quite the same.
No, DES has come a long way.
Right, and the thing of it is, people aren't out here digging holes, burying stuff like they did 50 years ago.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
No, and you're, I, we get what you're saying. I mean, they're acting for change.
I, I do get it. I do, because my farm, that's where all that dump went when I bought it. And back in 82, we cleaned it all up.
Yeah.
And it's gone, you know, and, and it's like, same with the Silver Farm down there. I mean, if you saw that place when I bought it, it's like you'd just shake your head and say, what are you, stupid? Taken, but it's all gone.
But they did, and you're right, and just like, we put our building in Hattler that was trash and, you know, those big, you know, equipment, cars.
Right, it's cleaned up. We cleaned it up. We cleaned it up. Like all the tires that were laying out through the woods and, I mean, I truck, truckloads to boss going dump, two bucks a piece. Get rid of them, but they're gone. So she, i- i- it's like, this will affect a lot of big landowners. If things that, you know, if they want to, all of a sudden, you got the piece of land on Close Pin Bridge Road, you want to subdivide it or whatever. That's going to be, it will throw a wrench into some of this stuff, the, this wetlands. In, in, even over to Lake One Apartment, you'd have to be pretty careful of what you did over there. Not that I wouldn't be, but the thing of it is, I've owned that piece of land longer than a lot of people have been in this town and I should be able to go in there and do what I want to do with it. Bottom line, as long as it's not hurting anything. And that's the way it should be.
Follow the rules that are in place.
Follow the rules that are in place. I should be.
I understand what you're saying, your point of view. The question is, what happens when somebody else does something that affects you in an adverse way?
That's what DES is for. Like I put in a wood boiler. Here's a perfect example of this, right? And, and it's my neighbor, okay? I put that wood boiler in in 2008 and the state was, they didn't like what I did. Got one wood boiler feeding two houses. I used to sell jack, six, eight cords of wood. I'd burn 10 in the house that was right beside it that I lived in, burning 10 cords of wood, heating two homes. Yeah, it's got a little bit of smoke. Turned me into the DES, but I'm all fine. I, I, I mean, all the rules are, I met the rules that were in place, still is in place. And so it's not, that's, you know, this is the way it is. I, I guess that's just my thoughts of it, but that's an example of it. You know, they turned me in twice. So that's, and DES came out the second time and, you know, it's like, I'm in the right.
But if you didn't follow the rules, then they, then they would, then they would take you off.
I followed the rules and so I could put a pig barn up right across the street from them and I'm still in, all good, right?
Oh, yeah. Believe me, I grew up in Iowa.
So it's all good.
I know about pig farms.
Right, nothing wrong with that.
As my dad would say, the smell of.
Kind of get a little off track.
Yeah, we're definitely off track.
Yeah, but that's just an example of it. That's all.
We are, but we're trying to make sure that Craig asked the question and.
Yeah.
So back to the motion.
Hello, I'm, I'm just spitballing here. I mean, I'm, I'm not supposed to be the one writing the warrant, but.
You're doing a good job. You help us.
Yep.
You know, we don't like, do we want in addition to the state's regulations? Is that better language?
I, I still feel like it's above and beyond what the state regulations are, DES regulations.
Trying to call it, everybody isn't working. I'd say in addition is what I'd go for.
You guys, I don't know if this is. Just looking at me, I'm like, okay.
I mean, that's what motions and votes are for, you know, it sorts this stuff out.
Yep.
Well, Paul's making the motion.
Well, I got the motion started.
You got to keep going with it, so are we going with an addition?
With the addition of the.
New Hampshire RSAs or the New Hampshire DES rules?
DES, DES rules, okay, we can do those, we can do that. And moving that other one up.
Up the sentence to the top, part two.
Yep.
But grandfathering.
Grandfathering. We're going to have to have this restated again now.
Yeah, I think so.
Because I'm.
You.
I kind of lost track of.
You want me to write it out?
Yeah.
My handwriting sucks, but I have a computer.
Just enough so that.
Well, what I'm thinking is I'll just type what I think we're saying.
And then read it and.
And then read it and say if it is what we're saying. Let me pull everything up, because this is not as easy it is downstairs because I have two monitors. It makes my life a lot easier.
I wish my husband were still alive. He was a groundwater specialist before he became a doctor.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he had a master's degree in water resources management from Madison. And he did, he worked for engineering companies and so he, he would have been a great, he would have been great at explaining. Because sometimes DES regulations are the lowest common denominator. They're maybe not as strong as they ought to be because otherwise they didn't get passed. So.
Golly.
But you do have.
I don't always feel it.
You do have, you know, the, the different limits of what's in the waters too, because I've seen that. And, and maybe, you know, there's a limit to what's what as far as like gas in it or, or anything like that, you know? And your benzines and all this sort of stuff.
Right, fortunately, we don't have any industry in town.
What's, right.
Well, we'd cause something like that, but who knows? You know, who knows what's going to happen in the future?
Well, we won't.
Gosh, Craig, it just seems like, God, when you do anything, you go for any permit, it's, it's not, it's not a walk up in the park.
Right.
I, I just, that's why I, yeah.
It's mean.
And, and, and sometimes in this town, we don't have any industry and we're just going to make it.
Well, what, what we did, what, what a little bit we had is gone. I mean, what, when I moved to the town here, we had two, you know, the store could get gas right up here on the, at Steben's Store had gas, you could get kerosene there, you know, and that's gone. There was a gas station right up here on the corner, right, Robies, when Robies, the, you turn and head that way, that building that was right there, that, that was a store. We built a store down there, the Cobrick Campground. My aunt Florence owned that. We put that up. That was a store there forever. And, you know, once she passed away, that ended up being a house and done. And so we're, we're losing, you know? You had a junkyard. You got nothing down there but a fenced in area, which, you know, that's.
That wasn't a public junkyard though, was it?
Uh, well, you could go there and buy parts. I mean, the guy that started it lives in town, Johnny Little, and, and he sold it to Richardson's and then they, he, he got hurt and died. And so she sold it to the Coparts and they cleaned it all up, made it a respectable yard. But I mean, they had trouble getting in and out with the weight limits, so.
I know, because every road in was a.
Yeah, but, but that's, it, I, I get that, the weight limit thing, but it's like, it's too bad that, you know, you got that area. That's what it's, it's good for down there, you know? It's just too bad. But the gravel pits, I mean, you know, it's like you, just the permitting part of that is so much today, it's a white water, almost. You know? That's why I shut mine down, because I just, 15 grand to do a little survey work. It's like, if I'm going to do that much, I'm going to subdivide it and get money out of it.
And I think that's always too, that's a fine line of where you scare people to say, I'm going to do this, when they would have kept it this, for sure.
So it just.
So we go through the same thing.
I've seen it. You have. It's just, you've seen it.
Yeah, I've been in town for 40 years. I don't, I don't live at the gas, the gas pumps, but.
Yep.
Paul, you probably can't have a driveway and went left instead of right. Right? Because really, to go to even work, right, you mean to have gone, went on left, you didn't go right.
Right, yeah. Always went well.
Yeah, because even I get to that divide. I don't, I don't hardly.
In my last 12 years or so of working, I was on the road.
Yeah.
So I would come in from Salisbury sometimes, so I would come by, but I'll come in from Boscoine, so.
Yeah.
It, you know, not very often. Usually when I.
There is almost a great divide though, you know, you go that way or this way. Because we're, I'm only like five minutes from 89 in a sense.
Yeah.
Well, that's why, you know, this town's going to change. There's going to be a lot of development in the next 20 years, I think, personally. I think somebody's going to come in, they're going to divide, put in subdivision houses, you know, it's not going to be the same. If, you know, we did that survey a couple of years ago, what, what do people want in town? And they like the way it is, you know? If you were all, not too much going on, perfect. And it's, the thing of it is, it's close to 89. And it's, the thing of it is, it's close to eighty-nine, it's close to Concord, it's sort of a bedroom community, the, the next thing that is comparable would be like Dunbarton, people from Dunbarton commute into Concord, right? So if you're looking at, or say Epsom, people commute into Concord. And we've avoided development like that occurred in those towns.
Don't you think we've avoided it greatly because it is like, there is tons and tons, well, he would know better than I would, family land?
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's even probably land that will be around our house that's going to be a lot of conservation, and because they have the money, they don't have to sell it, but I just hate to, you know, but I get what you're saying, you're just, you're afraid that, that.
I, I, you know, I, I worked in forestry, right? You go to these landowners, you say, you know, we can manage your land, they say, no, no, I don't, I don't want to do that, right? But what happens is, as every logger knows, that piece of property is going to change hands, you know? And it may be twenty years, maybe thirty years, maybe ten years, that property will change hands. Very seldom is it in the same family forever and ever and ever and ever.
But do we have any way to be like, like the arms of towns around us, Warner and, and, and Contocook or Hopkinton, the fact that, see, I get what you're saying, but I don't feel that it's fair to say, um, you know, you can't do this with your land like I did with my land, you know what I mean? Is, and I get it, you still are trying to protect, but I always feel like, well, if it goes up for sale and is need protection, do we have, do we, we don't have the resource like Hopkin and Warner to have money to purchase the land from the.
That's true, but we do have subdivision regulations.
Thank God, so we don't really have building ones, do we? Our driveway ones are harder to get.
No, but I'm saying it, it, it will happen.
Yeah, I, you know, when you get driving around though, I, and, and I mean, I can visualize quite a few of the roads and where are they going to go?
It's not like other towns, I'm with you, yeah, because even where we live.
It really is not, what, what really is already, like the little hill property up there, that's already, but that's a done deal up there, that's not going to go any further, other than one, I mean, we can't see it, I know, there's one.
Let me say that.
Which property is this?
What's that?
Which property is this?
Well, that would have been all.
You mean my land?
Her, her land.
My land.
But I mean, when, when they, uh, the, the, the Bodsley and McGrath bought that, they, they did it all up. They, they subdivided it, and it's all over, so that was one track. Your Betsy Janeway tracks, nothing's going to happen with all that down there. And your Abby Rockefella, I doubt that, 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 that will stay as is, I'm pretty sure, I can't imagine that, you know, so there's two great big landowners that, uh, won't, it won't happen, you know? And, and that, that, that Tyler Road, uh, uh.
I, I, I guess I'm not as confident as you are about that.
Yeah.
Conservation, I would be the only, I've got, I've written something.
It's too mine is, mine is.
It, it's, it's okay for now, but you don't know what's going to happen in the future.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, it's, you take, you know, I got a lot of road frontage, and I don't see it happening.
I am ready to read what I have wordsmithed. The purpose of this ordinance is to protect clean water for the current and future Webster residents, maintain drinking water quality, reduce stormwater hazards, protect habitat for plants and animals, and preserve the quality of life for Webster citizens. Current existing uses and activities are largely grandfathered, as are legal non-conforming uses, structures, and lots with some conditions. These rules will be in addition to New Hampshire DES regulations.
You didn't put all that up.
I think I got outvoted.
In addition means the same.
I'll second Paul's motion.
Okay. All in favor?
We have to?
Don't have to.
You don't have to, no.
I mean, we changed.
But they, but you, but you won anyways, I just, I, yeah.
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 Opposed, we see the other one, because you can still abstain.
Abstain.
I'm going to do the same. I, it just, you got to come from where I'm at.
Yeah, it's got to come from somewhere, and as I say, this is going to go in front of the public.
Yeah.
If it passes, it passes, if it don't, it don't.
Yeah, I get it, I, I get it, I know you guys have done a lot of work.
Right, that's important.
And you've done, and you, you've come a long ways from the day that you started, I will tell you that.
Started by the conservation.
We tried, we tried to listen to.
You, you did, you did, you did a good job, you guys, you guys did a good job listening to us, but it's just hard for a guy like myself to take and watch this, it's mean. You know, I got six grandkids and I got kids, and it's like, I think of what, you know, you're saying down the road, granted, my kids all have, they got houses, and, and my grandkids are going to get houses, because I got one for each one of them. So it's like, they can do whatever they want. The piece of land that I, the land that I own, my son will, it will be there, it's not going to, it's just not going anywhere, you know? That's the way it's brought up, it's bred, that's how it is, and I just can't, it's hard.
It is, and that's the way I feel, I have four, they're going to all have kids, well, maybe, but, uh.
Imagine if they have three apiece.
I know.
Four.
I know, we don't, they'll have to go see you for some land, we only got seventy acres. I said, they still keep doing the rules, we won't have anybody.
I wish my, I have three daughters, and I have not a single grandchild.
You don't?
No.
You don't know what you are missing, I'm going to tell you.
I'm, no, I'm, I'm, I'm trying hard to.
I've got, I've got one, I've got one that's, uh, he packs his lunch, and he sits in that skidder, he's sixteen years old, does a B-Lex school, he didn't go back to Merrimack Valley, just bought a brand-new pickup truck, and he's sixteen. I got one that's fourteen, and he helps me every day in the summertime, you know, skin wood, and he needs a little, uh, he, he has to go to school five days a week, and he needs some focus.
A little more guidance, that's all, yeah.
Because he's going to be one of them kids that just, oh, he's, he's a good boy, and he's, but he's wild.
Any other new business we could discuss? I don't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, no, we're good.
Any other new business?